All right, then I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:06 PM. If you want to do real call.
Sure. Moore.
Here.
Spurlock. Ross Driven.
Here.
Heard Johnson.
Here.
Carney.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
Meeting called to order at 7:07 PM.
Okay, up first, we have a public hearing on the budget. I don't think there were any comments specific to that. I'm sorry, can someone make the motion?
Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District, 97 moves into open session with public hearing on the district FY 22 budget.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Required to vote call.
Okay. Ross Driven.
Yes.
Heard Johnson.
Yes.
Spurlock.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Moore. Moore. Carney.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, I don't think we got any public comments.
So I can close the mo- should I do the motion to close? You just pull back the same motion. You can pull up the same motion.
So are we gonna show, do the presentation?
Yeah, what you, you can do the presentation during the budget hearing, just so you know that most districts reserve the public hearing only for the public, not for presentations by staff. So we could do the presentation, Rob, you could do it before the budget is approved. Up to the board.
Okay, I'll close it and then we can do it later. That I moved that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District moved to close public hearing on the district's FY 22 budget.
Second.
Ross Driven.
Yes.
Heard Johnson.
Yes.
Spurlock.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Moore. Carney.
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing, passed.
Okay, up next, we have public comment. Holly has volunteered to read the public comments for us.
First comment from Sylvia Schweri. I'm writing in behalf of Bike Walk of Parks to request that D97 Board adopt a uniform policy permitting biking to school. We've learned some elementary schools like Lincoln disallow biking to school, some schools allow it, and most have no policy at all. This lack of clarity creates a confusing situation for families. The absence of a district-wide policy may be due to risk aversion on the part of the district administration who in response to dangerous traffic around schools seeks to protect students. This stance by default increases the rate of driving over biking, which in turn leads to increased congestion. Streets become less safe rather than safer. Situation would be improved through clear policy in combination with better transportation, infrastructure around schools. Bike Walk of Park will advocate for better infrastructure. We need the district to join us with a unified policy that prioritizes both safety and multi-mobility. Thank you. Next one is Chris Morgan, D97 parent. District 97 has said that they have a goal of maximizing in-person learning this year, aligning with federal guidance, but their actions have consistently demonstrated otherwise. Additionally, the communication of who's making the decisions on these policies has been incredibly inconsistent after placing, often placing that one as for decisions on others. We've been told it was the department insisting on 14-day quarantine policies, and last week that it was the district making the choice not to enact the 10-day option. And not allowing the 10-day quarantine, we've been told, that it's because the district cannot decide what tests should be used for testing in the 10-day option, and that the decision-makers for that are nurses, health department, superintendents, and other administrators. We've been told that anything less than 14 days could introduce liability, despite multiple federally approved options in state laws that dictate localities, quote, identify the least restrictive means of controlling the transmission of disease, end quote. Section 690.1315, responsibilities and duties of the certified local health department. We've also been told that outside tests cannot be allowed over at Concerns of Equity. This is despite the fact that reliable PCR tests are available freely and easily throughout our community. The burden of driving 10 minutes for a five-minute test is far less of a risk to equity, forcing parents to take an additional four days off work. Additionally, there are a myriad of options to get creative, demonstrated commitment to actually keeping kids learning in person at no additional risk to public health. With around 60 D97 kids in quarantine, the cost to cover tests for all of them, besides free, of course, is de minimis in a community sitting on tens of millions of dollars in COVID funds. There are solutions that meet CDC guidelines, and even can greatly exceed them that are not difficult if the district was actually committed to doing so. It strongly encourages the school board to do the following. One, be transparent about who's actually making the decisions about quarantine options. Two, put forth demonstrated effort with whoever are the decision-makers, find an equitable way to follow a test-to-stay, or at least test-back-in approach to meet the goal of maximizing in-person learning. Take the input from the health department as a public health perspective, but marry that with other perspectives that actually address equity. 14 quarantines is the gold standard for reducing transmission of disease. Also consider, what is the gold standard for maximizing in-person learning? What's the gold standard for minimizing that time? The special education children are missing their legally mandated, mandated support system. What is the gold standard for minimizing the number of parents that could lose their jobs by being forced to take two weeks off work? The next comment is from Alap Shah to the board. As of 8/9/21, IDPH ISB have outlined a test-to-stay protocol as a safe option for children exposed to positive cases, a positive case in the classroom or outside of the classroom setting for low-risk exposures where both parties wear masks. The test-to-stay protocol exposed students have a PCR or rapid test on day 1, 3, 5, and 7, and if negative and asymptomatic, do not have to miss any in-person school days. Now that shield testing is accurate and available, why haven't we been given this option? Short of this, if kids can't be tested in the school yet, why are we not able to have our children in quarantine tests on our own? So they may return to school on days 11 through 14. These options are available in other districts locally and nationally. Why not here? If access to testing is an issue of equity, accessing all-day childcare may be a greater burden for parents' guardians than accessing a free drive-to-PCR test at a local pharmacy once a day for a few days. If the Oak Park Public Health Department's not allowing these options because of high local transmission, this is not the fault of our children who've worked hard to learn to wear masks and follow the rules. Thank you for your time. Next one is from Todd Walsh. I'm writing in regard to the COVID saliva testing for students. I think everyone is in agreement that we're all interested in doing what's best for our kids' well-being, and I trust that the COVID saliva testing policy was put in place for that reason. My concern is that the potential detrimental effects far outweigh the benefits. The benefits, as I understand them, is pre-symptomatic identification of COVID to limit the exposure of additional kids. Seems that the system is flawed and that the testing is done, then the child is exposed to their peers while potentially being a carrier of the virus. The results are provided after potentially spreading the virus to their peers. Furthermore, there have not been, has not been scientific evidence that the virus is any more dangerous to children than other illnesses they may be exposed to at school from asymptomatic peers, strep, staph, flu, rotavirus, E. coli. And I'm not saying these are not a concern, merely that no one would consider quarantining asymptomatic kids because of these other illnesses. As you're probably aware, the majority of serious illness and death in children are due to accidents, not illness last year and in previous years. Once the scientific community and our government deemed vaccines are safe and necessary, the safety of our kids in response to a significant concern, my child will be first in line to take it. However, quarantine seems to be in response to a preemptive fear. My concern is more for the research that has been done on the impact of quarantining kids, isolation, and underestimating the importance of in-person learning and impact to our kids if we're moving them from the classroom environment. Here are a few recent articles on the impact to kids, and my concerns are that the impact this will have mentally on our children through quarantine does not justify the rest of them presented by the CDC and scientific community through COVID. There are certain links to three articles. I urge you to reevaluate the COVID testing and modify it to, to more sensible approach. Thank you for listening. Daniel Frank. We should be proud of our community for our vaccination rate for Oak Park eligible residents exceeding 69%, increasing by the day. By comparison, the state of Illinois vaccination rate was 52% as of September 2021, even with Oak Park's lofty numbers, Cook County vaccination rate is just over 50%. We have an even higher vaccination rate, over 90%, to those who are most vulnerable. So why do parents feel like we are implementing a program called Shield, has an emphasis to remove children from school and place them into a 14-day quarantine? Why are we moving entire class of students to after-care programs if a single student tests positive? Make no mistake, this is not about shield. At face value, it looks like a tremendous program. It's about how shield is being implemented. Shield is a recommended strategy endorsed by the CDC. In fact, a study published on the CDC website on May 28, 2021, showed testing in Utah led to the following results. During November 2020 to March 2021, among 59,552 students who received testing, 1,886, 3.2% had a positive result. These programs facilitated the completion of approximately 95% of high school extracurricular competition events and saved an estimated 109,752 in-person instruction student days. The CDC provides an option under shield testing, shield using a test-to-stay approach with a 10-day quarantine when contacted with an option to test back in. The CDC also uses test-to-play as part of the study when it comes to sporting events. They didn't cancel sporting events in Utah. They tested the athletes and allowed them to play if they were negative. Results were staggering in favor of test-to-stay and test-to-play. In summary, the CDC is recommending a test-to-stay and test-to-play approach. Why is the general feeling by parents that D97 has a test-to-remove philosophy, along with implementing a 14-day quarantine when contacted, when a 10-day quarantine with an option to test is available? Why an entire after-care programs at risk of being closed when a single case confirmed? When shield testing is available, we need to see shield implemented as intended with a test-to-stay philosophy. Hepsin other after-care programs should not be closed when a single case is confirmed. We are one of the most vaccinated cities in the country. There's language being used that in-person schooling is contributing to a super-spreader scenario. The data shows this is not the case. Our community has rallied and done our part. We need D97 to respond to our high vaccination rate, implement a program and policy with an emphasis on keeping our kids in school, not removing them. Please consider implementing using a test-to-stay approach that models CDC study in Utah with a 10-day quarantine when contacted with an option to test in instead of the 14-day policy. Please liken after-school programs to test-to-play approach using athletic games where we test students, not remove entire class of students from participation. Test-to-stay should be part of the everyday vernacular with the 97 administration. The board members and those in the community, including the Oak Park Health Department, are responsible for making these decisions. Larissa Lee Woods. My son is a first grader in D97. He recently completed a two-week quarantine. I thought it'd be helpful to let the board know about his recent experience with remote learning during, during his two-week quarantine. Based on that experience, my thoughts on the new remote learning plan. My son was placed in a two-week quarantine on the first day of school. He was one of only two students in quarantine at his school at the time. We reached out to the school that day to inquire about remote learning and school materials, and were surprised to receive no response. Several days into my son's quarantine, he finally received two short Zoom calls, but no instruction on what he should do, what he should work on outside of Zoom. It wasn't until we followed up at the school a week later that we finally received some worksheets from the school instructions to use apps on his iPad when he wasn't on Zoom, and longer Zoom calls with the, calls with the substitute teacher when she was available, which to the subs' credit was excellent. Overall, it was evident that despite having ample experience and time to play, D97 was not prepared for remote learning. Furthermore, given that so much of the first few weeks of school is about teachers setting class expectations and everyone getting to know each other, D97's remote learning plan, even had it been well-executed, ensured that our son was behind the rest of the class by the time he returned, which sadly, he noticed and mentioned to us. Those two weeks left us extremely disheartened about D97 and his school. I was hopeful, and I heard that D97 would be changing its remote learning plan. However, upon reading about the new quote "window to the classroom plan," it's clear that it is worse than the original. It's completely unreasonable to expect anyone, let alone young children, young students to attend audio-only Zoom calls all day for two weeks with no ability to participate. In fact, ISB's recommendation for a minimum of 2.5 hours synchronous instruction per day for remote students specifically describes synchronous instruction as students being able to interact with their teacher. At least the prior plan met that recommendation by providing interaction with the substitute teacher. D97's window to the classroom is quite literally boarded up. In addition, D97 administration told us that under the prior plan, students who receive special education services would be denied access to those services during their two-week quarantine. It's concerning that the new plan remains silent on this important point. Two weeks is a long time to deny students access to the special education services they need. At least 67 students have been placed in a two-week quarantine in D97 since the beginning of the school year. That's 134 weeks and counting of inadequate education for D97 students. Fortunately for everyone, we are still in a pandemic, and as the widespread prevalence of Delta breakthrough cases has shown, it's not over. Although it's tough and creates challenges in so many areas of our lives, we need to continue to adapt. 18 months into D97 has the knowledge and experience to do a lot better. Its students certainly deserve it. Julie Spryson. Dear interim superintendents and D97 board, based on the utter disaster of finishing kindergarten within D97 remotely in spring 2020, my family made the decision to leave D97 last year for first grade in a local private Catholic school, where my oldest son was able to complete first grade in-person mass socially distanced and lucky enough not to have a single quarantine experience. At the end of the summer, we made the difficult decision to return to D97 because we believe in public education, especially within a well-funded district like D97 with a second grader and newly-minted kindergartner. On September 2nd, we came to regret that decision. Why? Because the lack of coordination, planning, and most important, accurate communication across the school and government bodies that impact decision-making when it comes to how to ensure we keep our kids safe and in school. There was a COVID exposure in our after-care program at Hepsin, and the decision by the Oak Park Public Health Department was that the Hepsin team had to quarantine for 14 days, and in turn, once our principal figured out what was going on, we were told that the 14 quarantine applied to school as well. When parents expressed concern about the different quarantine rules for after-care versus school hours in the same building, superintendent told us that the quarantine decision as it relates to school hours is also the decision of the Oak Park Public Health Department, and that D97 had no authority to override it. Fast forward a couple of days, and the director of the OPHD joined our school's PTO meeting and clearly communicated that D97 does have the authority to enact the option to test back into school after 10-day quarantine. They came out during meeting discussion that D97 is not prepared to do the testing in-house and won't allow an outside test because it's equity issue. This is where frustration grew even more because in a well-endowed school district in a village with $39 million in federal COVID relief, our first reaction is, sorry, we can't do anything due to equity issues? Why not eliminate the equity issues by thinking outside of the standards? Sorry, we can't do that due to equity cop-out. How about using some of the federal relief dollars to allow 60-plus students to test back into school earlier versus creating an even greater equity divide? And continue to do this as more students are required to quarantine. Now, the other issue, D97's utter failure to properly plan for what quarantine would look like this year. First quarantine remote learning plan was 2.5 hours of synchronous learning with ourselves and the rest we were left to fend for ourselves. Our school subs were great, but it still sucked because remote learning is impossible for a kindergartner, really challenging for a second grader. Word got out that some schools didn't have subs, so their situation was even worse. I know there's a sub shortage, but I can't accept that as the reason in our community. Then late on Friday afternoon, the other sheet dropped. D97 switched to full Zoom audio learning, audio-only learning. This was yet again another disaster like spring 2020. While our teachers try their absolute best, you can't expect a young learner to sit on Zoom for seven hours a day with limited video. This whole experience leaves me utterly disgusted with our leadership for passing the buck, not taking responsibility and not working collaboratively to keep kids in school. We're employing, ploring our community leadership to work together across D97, the OPHD, and more broadly, the Village of Oak Park president and board to stop failing our children, come up with creative solutions within CDC guidance to keep our children in school where they belong. Thank you. Kim Lucky, dear 97, D97 board, let's see, see to Dr. Winnet Griffin. The Illinois Department of Health and Illinois State Board of Education law for test-to-state protocol, which has been endorsed by the CDC and proven to be a very effective method to keep children in school during a potential exposure without a disruption to education. The test-to-stay protocol allows a close contact regardless of potential exposure location to test on days 1, 3, 5, and 7 while remaining in the classroom and other activities. More than 1,200 schools in Illinois, including our D97 schools, have signed up for the shield testing. The state has allowed those schools to do weekly testing to also implement test-to-stay program. The test-to-stay protocol allows our students to stay in school safely. You're denying them the right to fair and equitable education by not enacting this protocol. The AAP has provided guidance that remote learning is harmful and inequitable by stating, quote, "Remote learning highlighted inequities in education was detrimental to educational attainment of students of all ages and exacerbated the mental health crisis among children and adolescents." And yet, you, along with the OPHD, have decided to choose the option to keep students with potential exposure out of school as long as permitted by law, while you have other scientifically proven options available. As a member of this highly vaccinated community, a parent of young children, it truly is incomprehensible and flies in the face of experts, the commitment to in-person learning, and the constant refrain that you're committed to equity. Are you sure that you, there is nothing, there is not more inequitable place when you put each child's kitchen table next to each other? PS, could you also provide information on how you are denying special education services, denying access to free breakfast and lunches, and subjecting students to well-documented form of abuse called the silent treatment while you are keeping them out of school in the name of equity when you have another option? Most sincerely. That's it. Unless there's another one.
No, that was a, thanks, Holly. Um, okay, then we're moving on to the consent agenda. If someone could read the motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda.
Can someone second that?
Second.
Okay, Moore.
Yeah.
Spurlock.
Yes.
Ross Driven.
Yes.
Heard Johnson. Carney.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion passed.
We're on, oh, sorry, motion for the vice president.
Move that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary-
Or I don't think we're doing this.
Oh.
Oh, is this the vice president? Oh, we are doing this one, sorry. I thought this was a new board member.
No.
I was like-
No, you're good tree. I thought it was a new board member.
It's okay, I, we are going through today. The Board, I move that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District 97 hereby appoints blank as, uh, should I go ahead and say Venus hurt? As vice president of the board, effective immediately. Finally, we went it in.
A second.
I will second.
Okay, roll call. Spurlock.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Carney.
Yes.
Ross Driven.
Yes.
Heard Johnson.
Yeah.
The motion is passed to a point.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Vice President Heard Johnson.
All right, um, then we are at the budget. I think this is where Rob's gonna do his presentation.
Yeah, I could just give a brief summary.
Sure, that'd be great.
The, um, the final budget isn't, is, is very similar to the tentative budget that was presented in August. Um, the budget that's being asked, uh, that I'm asking, that we're asking the board to approve has total revenues of $109,481,000. Total expenses excluding capital projects of $106,200,000, so an operating surplus of $3,479,000, revenues over expenditures. And then in addition to that, within the capital projects fund, our capital expenditures in the amount of $18,381,000.
Any questions?
And I do want to add that we do have, uh, just like last year, there's a lot of uncertainty related to COVID. We have built in a $200,000 contingency for COVID. And we also have some contingency within some of the salary numbers in the event that certain things happen that are unforeseen.
Any questions or comments for Rob? No? Okay, then if someone could make the motion for the adoption of the budget.
I'm with the Board of Education- I'm with the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School District 97 moves to adopt the FY 22 budget as presented to the board.
A second.
Okay. Spurlock. Heard Johnson.
Yes.
Ross Driven.
Yes.
Carney.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Moore.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt the FY 22 budget passed.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Um, up next, we are at the discussion, uh, the administrative, discussion on live streaming student activities.
This is something I, I put on the agenda simply to that our parents, as you know, as mitigation, cannot attend their children's athletic events or fine arts programs. Many districts, including the one I left in DeKalb, live-streamed all the basketball games, volleyball games, school plays, concerts. Uh, I asked Michael if we have the technology to do that. So, Michael, what would it take for us to provide that service to our parents? Because I know the parents would be interested. If they can't be in the gym, it can't be in the auditorium, I'm sure they would like to see their, their students compete. Or perform, so.
Yeah, um, so there's, a year ago, we weren't, we didn't have athletics going on here in our schools and the events, and I know they were doing some things like that. Um, so we didn't have that immediate need last year to do that. So there's been a couple of different districts, as Dr. Powell shared. So there's a solution called a huddle camera. Um, I've already researched, got some information from them. They're providing a final proposal where they would install a camera into both of our gyms. So then we could, um, and it's, it takes away the need for somebody to actually man, like, take the camera and do all, like, showing what's going on and, 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 and any editing paste on that, similar to the solution we're talking about here in the boardroom. So, but that solution would be just literally doing the camera. Um, the initial proposal, they said, it is an ongoing, they've changed to more of a licensed model, um, where they give you two cameras, and then you get to stream everything. It all sits in their cloud, and people can access that stream and everything. And that was $8,000 a year. So I'm working to, because that also adds some other, like, sporting things that, like, that actually show, like, how many shots were done in certain parts of the basketball court and whatever that might be. And not that we don't need that data or would love to have that data. We do see that more at a high school or a higher level than that. So I'm trying to work with them to provide us just the raw, like, give us the cameras, give us the footage, how do we stream this? So they're working on a proposal, and I thought I'd have it today, but I don't yet. But they did say it's, it is a quicker turnaround time on some other things, but that's about what we're looking at for the gyms, to do the auditoriums and those situations. We'd be looking at a little bit lesser of a camera because we could bring and set it up, and we wouldn't need something to be tracking back and forth. It would fit the whole stage. Where on the basketball court, you're really, they are zooming in a little bit more, tracking what's going on in the court or volleyball or so. So I do feel confident that we could supply that and do that if that was the interest for us to move forward, uh, for our staff to be able to do that, or for our families to be able to, to, to move forward there, so.
So I, I feel like we should get permission when these parents, sorry, I'm echoing. When these kids sign up for these activities, get permission for them to be filmed because or else it'll be like, the ship will sail, and then we might have challenges with that and let, let families know that we're doing that. And also, by, I, I appreciate that you might come bring it back, but I mean, for $8,000 or whatever this, these amounts are, I feel like, um, if it's gonna be less than that anyway, we might be able, I mean, those amounts seem very reasonable to me. I don't know how anyone else feels.
Yeah, and I did bring up the, so when we have part of our registration with share, uh, parents sign off. I don't know if you remember that, like, can their work be posted? Can there be photographs and all of that? So I'd go back and make sure if that's on that piece, but we would have to think about the athletes or performers that are coming in that are not our staff, not our kids, uh, because they would be on camera, would be streamed. So that is a, another conversation we'd have to have. But yes, it would be a notification out to us and to, I, I, I'm not sure, that's where I'd be reaching out to our high schools and other people that have done that, what did they do? But their kids are also over 13, so it's just a little bit of a different situation that we would have. So I'd reach out to our group and say, what are the under-13-year-old districts doing for kids that are competing or performing? I mean, the performance are our kids, so it's a little easier there to get out, but it's the competition that we'd have to address.
Michael, did I understand you correctly in that for the gyms, we would use this contractor for live streaming? But for, like, musical performances, uh, because the camera is stationary, that the district can handle that tech?
Yeah, I think the, the, the camera itself would be a little bit different. Um, and I, I mean, just again, originally, just, we could potentially look at like a Zoom, get a higher-quality camera, zoom in, and, and just be able to leverage the live streaming through Zoom to YouTube Live. We've seen some of that happen with our Cast and Bravo, other programs that have happened a little bit in the summer, and how we're doing it right now. So I think that we could do a form of what we're doing currently, um, and just buying that camera for those performances that we really can fit on a stage and in a fixed-camera site. Uh, for the gym, it just is that movement that's happening, and that's that huddle solution. It's really by-the-camera stream, like, if, let's stream on there through their system to do that, so.
So that would be the responsibility of someone in each building?
Yeah, so for those two, it'd really streamline it as much as possible where it's like, you set up, start it, and move on from there for the performances. The huddle, yes, you do have to, like, we'd have to start or schedule those events. And then a lot of times, it would be able to just start up. Once they start, it's just, you don't touch it. We don't have to have somebody act- And then a lot of times it would be able to just start up. Once they start it, just you don't touch it. We don't have to have somebody actually managing the camera and doing anything for the gym event. The other one, they'd have to have somebody start and end and do that. But if you, we would work to make it very minimal. So we're not paying hours of staff to be able to go through and start it, manage it, and then also edit any content if needed or whatever like that.
Okay, I have one more question, but I'm hogging all the questions, so I want to give somebody else a chance to talk if they have a question. Okay, so I'm thinking about basketball, because that's, that is something that's coming up for girls. I think the basketball season starts sooner, boys start soon. What about our, the teams we're playing with those students? Do we have to have them sign a waiver or?
That's why I need to find out what we need to do and what our other districts doing again, because our kids are under thirteen. So what are they doing for that if the high school, I think it's, they're over, of age. I don't know if there's a different criteria of what that looks like. But that's what I'm, my next contact to, um, after this conversation, if we're moving forward, what do we need to do there and start getting that type of information out? Yep.
Okay, thank you. You, sorry, you might ask, answer that with Holly, but I was only thinking of our students, not the other students.
Yep.
This is last of a question, I guess, for you, Michael, maybe more for you, Griff, but, um, some of these activities would normally have a fair number of volunteers that would work with them. I'm thinking specifically of some of the performances or even like, I don't know if we're gonna have robotic competitions, like that might be streamed. Like, I know currently people aren't allowed inside the buildings. Um, has there been discussion of how that's gonna be handled in terms of, um, like, they're? Because that's gonna significantly change the way some of these programs would run, I would imagine.
We, we actually had a discussion today about robotics and the mentors for robotics. And, and that's a mitigation that we will be looking at removing, uh, if we can do it in a safe fashion. Uh, to me, those are services that benefit our students that we want to, uh, eliminate and peel that mitigation off, if we can do it safely. So that's our intent. Uh, and one argument was made, if we have basketball, we bring in, uh, referees. Uh, and we got to make sure that they're vaccinated and, you know, they meet all the protocols. Well, could we do that with mentors? Yes.
Great, thank you.
Recent discussion, right? And we would get the consent, uh, from the other teams. And, and I, we did, the, uh, DeKalb's a unit district. We did the middle school too. All, all the activities last year were, uh, middle school all the way through high school. So if we have a green light, we'll bring back to this on the twenty-eighth and give you more details.
Are there any other questions for Michael?
And I will share it in the Friday update. So like, going back to Holly's question, if it is, it costs like, not a large cost and it is something that we're seeing. And we want to move forward based on that, because it would be under the threshold and all of that, that we can do that just to, again, not to miss any of the events or anything that's happening, so.
Great, thank you, Michael. Um, up next, then we have school update and our special reports.
Let me start with some, uh, some good news. In the last two weeks, we've had five positive cases out of three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four students that were tested. Uh, we're moving towards four thousand students with five positive cases. I believe that's a very safe, healthy environment, uh, for our, our, our students. Uh, to me, there's clearly a bigger, bigger risk if you go to Wrigley Field or Sox Park, uh, than going to school at District ninety-seven. It's a very healthy environment. Attendance, uh, the last, this is from August twenty-fifth through September fourteenth through today. Our attendance is at ninety-eight point four percent, students, uh, for, in attendance. Between, that's between August twenty-fifth and the fourteenth. Twice the absences, uh, by the way, were the day before Labor Day and the day after Labor Day. For some reason, this community likes to extend, send, uh, their, their days off.
In fairness, it was Rosh Hashanah the day after Labor Day.
Well, that, there's a legitimate reason, but, uh, just for, for family vacations, uh, not supportive of that idea. School comes first. Vaccinated staff, eighty-eight percent of our, all employees are vaccinated. And that, uh, I think it's even higher than the high school. So very, very pleased with that. And we believe that's going up, not down. Well, it can't go down. Pardon me? Yes, I, I text her and asked her to join us and for, for this item. Remote learning, yes, we have a passive window, uh, to the classroom. Uh, it is not only auditory. Uh, teachers do have, uh, flexibility to use, uh, visual and auditory, uh, engagement. Uh, it's only three days old. We started on Monday. Uh, this is something that we did have to negotiate with our, uh, teachers' union. Uh, we are gonna be visiting this on an ongoing basis to make sure it is in the best and work, is working for most of our students. It is a bigger challenge in the primary ga, grades, in kindergarten, first and second grade, and our special needs students. And that's where we have to put our, uh, extra focus on those primary grades and our special needs students. That's gonna be a, a clear focus. The quarantine, our goal is to test back on days eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. When we get a, a sustainable plan in place, we intend to test back. Uh, and Dr. Chapel, uh, has approved the testing back on, on eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen. Uh, and that's, that's our intent. By the way, we've also, uh, by the way, approved, the board approved certified nursing assistants to give our nurses who are overwhelmed additional support. So anybody in the public, that, anybody that you know is, as board members, if they're interested in this position, please have them co, contact Human Resources. Because we, we do need additional, uh, support. Shield testing, uh, before I introduce Dr. Chapel to answer any of your questions, Jim Hackett. Jim has worked tirelessly, seven days a week, for fifteen hours a day to get shield testing, uh, going in our district. Uh, many districts have to wait a month or two before they even get started, because Jim started this in last May and June. Uh, we, we're off to a start rocky, uh, for sure. Jim, would you want to give us some of the highlights, maybe the lowlights of, of your first couple of weeks?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, uh, obviously the.
Yeah, I don't think you're, you're, um, you're unmuted. Need to mute, whoop.
Can you guys hear me?
There you go.
All right, sorry about that. Yeah, so we're, we're in, we just started our, we are second week of testing today with, with Lincoln and Bi. As, as Dr. Powell said, there, you know, this, there are some learning curves here for everybody, including the collections team, the staff, as well as the students. Um, the, the things that I have witnessed have been, have been great and the kids are doing amazing. Um, and there's, just, just a few things on our end that we're gonna try and, and clean up. And then there's a couple of issues with, you know, uh, overwhelming the labs and then that's on shield and, and they're working through that piece. Um, for instance, some of our, our samples are getting shipped out to Loyola and then getting pushed out to, uh, Illinois State University. As well as other labs across, uh, across Illinois. So, uh, they've opened a few more labs to accommodate, um, you know, quicker results. Because their goal is still to get underneath that, that twenty-four hour threshold. Uh, the feedback today from Lincoln was positive. Uh, I have not had a chance to follow up with Bi, but I do believe that we did capture more samples at Lincoln today than we did last week. Um, and so we're just gonna continue on that upward trend and, and try and, and capture more samples. You know, and, and eventually, hopefully, we hit a hundred, hundred percent of the samples of the people that, that want to be tested. That, that's our goal. Um, there are some challenges to that, but we're gonna continue to modify the process and work through things, uh, and hope that we can, we can accomplish that.
Thank you, Jim.
Jim, I have a question really quick.
Go ahead.
Dr. Powell, can I ask my question?
Absolutely.
Uh, how are the labels generated for the shield, for shield testing for the students?
How are the labels generated?
Yeah.
Um, I, I made them. I'm not sure.
Well, like, so when they're going out for a testing, um, it, there's no self-collection, right?
Well, I'm a little confused. There's a couple of different label options, so, um. Basically, what happens is, is the students get a bag with a label on it that has their name and date of birth. In there is a collection vial and it has a barcode on it and just the date of birth. So what happens at the location is they collect the samples and to expedite the process, they're not scanning them in right away. When they catch a break at lunchtime, um, or those times, they're scanning them in. And the process is, is they go into the portal, they type in the student's name. The name populates, they, they scan in the barcode. And then that's the only thing that goes to the lab. So there's not a whole bunch of identifiable information on that. Um, you know, that, that's visible. It's tied to the barcode, which is then tied to, to the portal. The only thing that's on there is a date of birth, just as another way for checks and balances to, you know, in case there's some issue, they can try and capture that. Um, is that kind of, did it answer your question?
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering, were you, is it just you or you who is generating the labels or are parents able to do that? I was just wondering, like, what their process was, but I think you answered my question.
Yeah, everything's, everything's happening with in-house or with our third-party collections team.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
And we're very, uh, lucky to, Dr. Chapel actually had a, a conflict tonight and she was nice enough to get, she was able to get out of her meeting early, uh, and to join us. Dr. Chapel, are you with us?
I am. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Great to see you. Let me ask you, start off with a quick question. I just announced that we had five positive cases out of three thousand, seven hundred, and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four tested. As a layperson, I see that very positive. How do you, how do you view that?
That is great. Um, I don't think that you guys have had any school that had an outbreak either for these last few weeks or for the first few weeks of school. So I think you guys are doing really well.
Do you believe it's, it's because of our, our masking, universal masking, our efforts to socially distance? Our careful, uh, you know, the care that we put during lunch periods, uh, to try to make that as safe as possible?
Yes, I totally think the mitigation methods that we put in place are showing that they're working right now. Um, I also think that it's, um, because of the quarantine that's happening as well. We're taking exposed students out of the classrooms so that there's no, um, so that we're stopping any transmission chains that can occur. So yes, I think across the board, we're seeing that the mitigations that we have in place are working. And I hope that that's something that will continue to work, um, throughout the rest of this school year.
By the way, before I open up to board members, I can't thank you enough for being so available to us and so receptive to all our, our crazy questions and some good ones, some bad ones. But you've been, uh, just fabulous in terms of, of working closely with us. So thank you. Board members, questions? We have a quiet board here. No, can't believe there's no questions.
Um, I, I have a question.
Okay.
So I know we, uh, currently, we were looking at a fourteen-day quarantine. And there was a lot of parent pushback and looking to get it to ten days. Can you just, for those who are hearing about it but may not fully understand, and the fourteen-day perspective versus the ten-day perspective? Can you just provide a little bit of education on that?
Sure. Um, to start, I just want to say that we do have two options available in Oak Park. And those two options are fourteen days, uh, quarantine, which is the gold standard, or ten days with testing on days eleven through fourteen. So, uh, the reason why, um, we have these two options is that one, fourteen days is the gold standard. So the latency period of the virus is that it can lay dormant between days two to fourteen and it takes, um, time to develop. So, uh, if someone is exposed on day zero, they might test negative on day four and then subsequently test positive on day thirteen. Um, it's possible for the virus to just, uh, take that long to develop in a person all the way up to fourteen days. Now, the likelihood that the virus will develop changes with each day. And so towards those last four days, the likelihood that someone would convert to be a positive case on day, um, eleven through fourteen is somewhere between ten to twelve percent. Now, in our community, we have high virus transmission. And so that means that the virus is, is right now is, is at uncontrolled levels is, is the highest that, it, there's nothing higher than high. Um, and that's where we are. And because we have such high transmission, uh, the idea of adding to our community transmission rates at the ten to twelve percent, uh, chance that people could convert is really a chance that we don't want to take. We want to work on bringing our community transmission rates down, not adding to them. And the more that we can bring our community transmission rates down, the safer that our community will be and the safer that school will be. The less likely it is that we would even bring the virus into school if we have low community transmission rates. So that's the goal. Um, having it where people can just come to school at ten days without the extra testing would mean that we were introducing, uh, that we could introduce virus back into the community. And so, um, that is not a chance that we're willing to take. That goes against our objective of lowering, lowering our community transmission. Um, and so in order to have the children come back to school at day ten, we need to be able to test on those days eleven through fourteen, so that we can catch whoever may convert and be able to, um, remove them from school, isolate them, so that they don't spread it to the people in their classrooms or, or people they come in contact with. Uh, so that's why we have those two options. And when D ninety-seven is up and running with their testing capacity on eleven through fourteen, um, it will, in fact, feel like a ten-day quarantine option. Um, with the, with the opportunity to test on those days. So that's what we have.
Thank you.
But just to clarify, Dr. Chapel, part of the reasoning for the fourteen days is not that it's a black and white, like, fourteen days is the only thing we're sticking by. But it's the fact that we have high transition, transmission rates currently in the community. Um, so even though we, we've gotten a number of public comments, I don't know if you heard any of them in terms of talking about our high vaccination rates. Uh, but despite that, we still have a fair amount of transmission in the community and so it'd be an increased risk at this point. Um, or a, a risk we'd have to weigh seriously in terms of doing the testing. Is that, is that, is my understanding of that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And just related to that, to follow up, um, we've also, um, have had several parents mention test to stay, where students who are close contacts actually are brought back into the school and then just tested on days, I believe it's three, five, seven, nine. I believe that's my understanding from what you're saying is that's the same issue of you're just bringing in the, the higher risk with doing this.
Yes, I would not do that at all in our community unless we had low community transmission. Low community transmission is described as zero to nine cases per every hundred thousand. Right now, we have about a hundred and ten thousand cases per every hundred thousand. So I wouldn't consider at all test to stay unless we were really on that low end of the spectrum, where it was truly unlikely that, um, that we would be increasing our community transmission at a rate that is, um, that is, is hard for us to control. Right now, um, our rates are extremely high and to have that test to stay option means that if someone converts to positive on day seven, we now have to go back and look at all those people who they've been in contact with from day five on. And we have now a whole new group that has to quarantine. And so that's just, I mean, that's just introducing a, a, a sustainable kind of cycle into the classroom and, and more disruption. Um, that I feel comfortable with, with this high level of community transmission that we have right now.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Dr. Chapel?
Yes, Dr. Chapel. Good evening. Um, I just wanted to clarify, um, while we have you, uh, we've gotten a lot of emails about the different, um, procedures or the different policies for after-school care versus in-school care. Can you talk a little bit about what that difference means and why it was chosen? Um, a lot of parents are, of course, working parents and we definitely understand, you know, the difficulty of having your child out of school for fourteen days. But can you talk a little bit about the difference between after-school care and in-school care?
Sure. So the CDC has, um, a definition for close contacts and that definition is within six feet for fifteen minutes, um, of time over a twenty-four hour period. So that's the definition of a close contact. They make an exception solely for. They make an exception solely for K through twelve classroom instructional time. So that exception is that close contacts in that scenario would be those people less than three feet as long as they have masks on for fifteen minutes of time. If they don't have masks on, then it never gets back to the six feet for fifteen minutes of time definition. So it's not that I am making a distinction between aftercare programs or things like that. It's that the CDC definition only carves out an exception for in-class instructional time. This does not translate to lunchroom time. It doesn't translate to extracurricular activities at the schools or anything else. This is specific to in-class instructional time. That exception is there because it's thought that instructional time is more of a standardized controlled time, that children are sitting, that children are quiet, that children are working, that children, you know, are more distant from each other. And that overall is just a more controlled setting than you would have in any other type of environment. So this definition of close contact literally only gives you that exception for in-class time. It doesn't work for church. It doesn't work for aftercare. It doesn't work for gymnastics or any other activities that people are in. It is only specific to school, instructional learning in school. And so I think that people heard the close contact definition and thought that it just applied to children K through twelve age. But it but it was really specific to a certain environment. And so what happened was that in aftercare, there is, you know, that's a less controlled environment. And and the CDC definition does not apply. So we have to go with the the general definition that we've had for eighteen months of this pandemic of what a close contact is.
Thank you.
Well, before we let you go, Dr. Chapel, you have a lot of questions coming at you. And you also may be aware of informations or misinformation floating around our community. Is there anything in this forum that you would like to address related to what's going on in our schools? Quarantine, close contact, any other topics that you want to cover that would help our to help educate our community as we live through this pandemic?
Yes, I think it's helpful to know that the definition for close contact, the only time that we care about masking and not masking in the definition is if is if we're in a classroom setting with less than three feet quarantine. So in order for it to be that we quarantine at three feet, you have to be in a classroom setting, have to be doing instructional time, and everyone has to be wearing properly fitting masks during that time. So I've gotten calls about, well, my child was only unmasked for a few minutes at this, you know, occasion, and so we shouldn't quarantine at a certain feet. It only really applies in that specific scenario. If you are six feet apart, then there is no question about mask or unmasked. The quarantine happens for those people within six feet regardless of mask wearing. Another question that I've gotten a lot is when people have told me that they've identified the the case zero, the patient zero. And they've said that, you know, my child hasn't been within the the six feet or three feet of that child for more than fifteen minutes. What I want to say to people is that one, we really have to respect the health privacy of people. And we should not be outing that that patient zero. That is just really kind of an inconsiderate thing to do when it comes to someone's personal health information to be sharing that broadly. And I I do want us to to be considerate of people's personal health. And then the other piece is that we're talking about being within six feet of distance over the course of twenty-four hours. And so the way that the definition works is that it could be five minutes here, it could be three minutes there, it could be one minute here. As long as it cumulatively adds up to fifteen minutes, then that exposure needs to count and that quarantine has to happen. And so I think it's really hard to to make the case that if contact tracing happened, that your child wasn't within three or six feet of someone for fifteen minutes over the course of time. I think that's just a really hard thing to know and to be able to to combat. And so we have to go with what the seating charts say. We have to go with what the contact tracers say, what the nurses say in order to 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 really manage this pandemic at such a large scale and for all these people. And so I do understand that quarantine is a burden. No one wants to be quarantined. No one wants to be isolated. I I totally understand and agree with all of that. However, if the contact tracing has identified your child as a close contact, then we have to go along with the information that was provided to us. And we at the Health Department do not have the ability to go back and track where everyone was for to see if we can come up with that fifteen-minute timeframe. We have to go along with what was given to us by by those people who are doing the contact tracing. And then lastly, no, I have two more things. One is that it is extremely important to take a verifiable test. So at-home tests are easy to get at Walgreens or anywhere else. And so I really do understand the preference to just grab an at-home test. However, we cannot use that at-home test at the Health Department for purposes of releasing your child from quarantine. Or even if you have have had COVID in the last ninety days, you don't have to quarantine. But if I don't have an official test on record, then I cannot say that your child had COVID August first and therefore doesn't need to quarantine September fifteenth. We have to have an official record on hand in order to help support the case that your child does not have to quarantine. And then the last piece is that it is really important to, because COVID is is because we have such high community rates of COVID, I really do want us to work together as a community to try to lower those rates so that we can make sure that we are not bringing COVID into the schools. And ways that we can do that is by lowering our number of contacts, by not doing high-risk activities, by considering not traveling. Don't take your unvaccinated children into restaurants or places where there's there's higher risk settings. So please really consider the activities that we're doing as a community and what high-risk activities can do and how that can bring COVID into the classrooms and end up having to quarantine more people. That's all my messages. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, we do want to thank you so much for your time, Dr. Chapel. I know you have a very difficult job and a very difficult time. So we appreciate all the work you do for the community. Okay. By the way, are there any other last-minute questions or comments?
A last-minute question. Any word, Dr. Chapel, from your colleagues about the vaccine for kids under twelve? And any updates on timing when that'll be available?
I have been highly frustrated by the conflicting information that's coming out of the federal government about when vaccines will be available for those under twelve. I have three children under twelve, and I am patiently waiting like the rest of us. And it's really conflicting. It could come somewhere between the end of October or the end of the calendar year. I that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Chapel, once again. And then we will move on to the
Hanover research report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Carrie Cam. I serve as the District Senior Director of Equity, and I will be providing this evening's special report on Hanover Research. Next slide, please. And this will provide sort of a high-level summary and mirror what was included in the written report that was part of this evening's board packet. Just a bit of background. In March of 2020, the Board of Education requested that our former Superintendent Dr. Kelly present options to the Board for assessment frameworks to determine initiative impact and options for developing a public-facing dashboard and assessment framework to describe key indicators of progress aligned with our equity policy implementation components. And Dr. Kelly, in working with the administrative team, brought forth to the Board a proposal from Hanover Research, which the Board approved on April twenty-first, 2020. Next slide. And I think we all remember what happened around March of 2020 is that all our lives and running of a school district shifted very rapidly. And so initially, we, Dr. Kelly, was working with the Board on developing a research queue and a project sequence. And given sort of the realities of, you know, public schooling during COVID times, we made some adjustments in the project queue. And so you see there listed on the slide the project queue for school year 2021. And that we started the year working with Hanover. We had a subcommittee of faculty, nurses, social workers, student support specialists, assistant principals and principals and myself, who thought that it would be important to in of August of 2020 send create a social, emotional, and mental health needs assessment that asked our families and staff to provide information around their needs, but also for our families to provide information about the needs of their students as we were, you know, entering into a school year. As you recall, that we started in a remote setting. From there, the Board had requested a social, emotional learning survey. And so I were I was the lead in working with Hanover Research and also with our principals, assistant principals, and student support specialists, culture, climate coaches, on designing a social, emotional learning survey that we gave to students in November of 2020 and then of April of 2021. Hanover also, we did a couple of data exports to Hanover from some of our our data over the last five years. And from that, Hanover Research produced an academic outcomes analysis in May of 2021. And then we had our Equity Scorecard in they completed in March 2021, which also we also had a board presentation on the Equity Scorecard in March. Next slide, please. So our current agreement with Hanover expires on October thirty-first, 2021. And the administration is recommending that we extend our research partnership with Hanover from November first, 2021 until October thirty-first, 2022, with at a financial impact of sixty-five thousand dollars. We started talking with because we are currently in a in a contract with Hanover. We spent some time over the summer looking at our last year's social, emotional learning survey and taking components of that to design a school culture and climate survey that would be given in the fall and spring for students in grades three to eight. There's also a component for parents and staff to take as well. And then we also are interested in working with Hanover to complete a co-teaching service delivery model evaluation. And I'm going to pass the mic to Donna Middleton to explain just a bit about sort of the the interest of conducting this co-teaching evaluation at this time.
Thank you, Carrie, and hello, Board. Co-teaching is one important initiative that our district is taking to ensure our overall vision of creating a positive learning environment for all District Ninety-seven students that is equitable, inclusive, and focused on the whole child. In addition, this practice aligns with our idea of federal requirements that ensure that, to the maximum extent appropriate, children with disabilities are educated with those without. And the co-teaching initiative provides further access to general education for students that may otherwise be placed in a self-contained special education classroom. It is important that we measure the overall impact that co-teaching is having with our students, general education, and special education as we expand our program and support our equity imperative. The research tells us that when students are included, that they achieve at higher rates academically and acquire better social and behavioral outcomes. And we look forward to partnering with Hanover now as we enter year five of expanding our co-teaching in our district to know what's working and where our areas of growth may be. Hanover will be looking at academic outcomes, behavioral outcomes, staff and parent perceptions, and teacher experiences with co-teaching within our district.
Thank you, Donna. Next slide, please. And the final slide shows the proposed project sequence for this next set of work with Hanover Research. And some of that has already Donna and I have already started to have some very initial conversations with Hanover regarding what the evaluation logic model might look like and also some of the what some of the the data collection might need to look like and starting to to create a timeline for that. You'll see there's also in that research queue in that top row, we also have the two installations of the culture the two administrations, sorry, of the the climate survey that we're we're targeting November and April for. And one thing I should make sure to include is that our principals, nearly all of our schools, have school improvement goals that are aligned with indicators that would that were included in last year's social, emotional survey, but will also be included in this year's culture and climate survey. So it'll it'll help principals and, you know, they're building leadership teams and their their school staff to really be able to measure progress on some of those those goals. So that's just a little bit about the anticipated project queue pending Board approval of our next agreement with Hanover. And so I will take any questions now if there are any.
Hi, so I I thought I I think I must have misunderstood. So I didn't ask this question before, and I'm sorry for that. Are we not going to continue to look at student performance with Hanover? I feel like that's a really big concern with data. And I was under the impression that that would also continue along the theme of Equity Scorecard and the fact that we've got student performance, I mean, especially in light of COVID, we're going to want to be prepared to make up for anything that and loss that occurs and also just kind of reverse the direction of some of the things that have been revealed through through recent testing.
Yes, we've spoken with Hanover, and so we would just need to figure out when would be when we would provide them with data, this year's school data, that they would be able to roll into the existing Equity Scorecard. And that is possible to do.
And then what about like taking steps and figuring out how to improve on the student performance? Not just documenting it, but using it to help us make decisions, data-driven decisions?
Yeah, and so if you recall from the Equity Scorecard presentation last spring in March, the Hanover does provide some recommendations. And the administrative team at the time looked at those recommendations and we provided some next steps that were based upon those recommendations. And I'm happy to reshare those with the Board in this week's weekly admin update, just to like kind of refri. I know that was, you know, a while ago to refresh what are some of the administrative I know that was, you know, a while ago, to refresh what are some of the administrative team's next steps that were based on those recommendations.
Okay, that would be great.
Sure.
I guess, to Holly's point, are we going to follow through with those and then measure them? I mean, if we're talking about, I mean, I think there was some, a fair amount of frustration with the previous Board at how little we've been moving towards equity. And I, and it feels like some of this is a little repetitive in terms of we keep documenting the disparities that exist in the district, but we don't really document the changes we're making or not making. And so I do feel like, to Holly's point, and, and some of the previous Board members, like, it, it feels like we're a lot of times, like, running in place. And so how are we moving this forward?
Yeah, so that, so the Hanover piece is really about the, the data analysis interpretation and display. The real work about, like, documenting the changes and reporting out on progress, whether that's sort of at our, you know, our trimester, we do trimester data dives internally at schools, and so presenting that, that data out to the Board, which is more of like, our, like, localized, ongoing data that we collect throughout the school year might be a better way to document some of the, the changes as they're happening this school year. I would need to speak with Dr., you know, Lofton about that, and her team, about how we might address that.
And a lot of it, Carrie, is already kind of addressing each individual school improvement plan as we thought about them. So each school has reviewed their data, has looked at what those high-leverage tactics are to actually think about those student groups that we need to make sure are actually meeting our excellence targets. So that work has already happened and actually started that last year on the individual school level. And then in terms of the district work, and we brought, obviously, our bath changes. We're obviously thinking about how we support all our student groups as we're thinking about, for sure, moving into our resource reviews and that kind of thing in our pilots, and making sure that we have resources that really meet student needs. So there are a number of different ways that we're thinking about the how of this. But to Carrie's point, Hanover really kind of thinks about kind of analyzing where we are, kind of in informing those steps.
So I, I have a sort of similar, maybe it's more of a, I don't know if it's a question or a concern. So my recollection of when we decided to partner with Hanover was that we had had some discussions around some of the expectations that are in the equity policy that we hadn't put into place yet. And specifically, there's a section in the equity policy called "Reporting and Accountability." And one of the things that it says is that it holds this, the Board will hold the Superintendent accountable for establishing annual goals or prioritize the requirements of this policy and making measurable, measurable progress in meeting those goals. It goes on to talk about annual reporting on student disparities, and then furthermore talks about developing an action plan that talks about how we get planned to address those disparities, how we'll measure the effectiveness of those actions, et cetera. And I think when we, when we started talking about this, when I came on the Board, the policy was already in place, but we hadn't done this yet. Part of the concern was that we didn't have the capacity, from a data perspective, to do everything that was in there. And so we asked the administration, as I recall, to tell us what capacity would you need to be able to do this? And this is when Dr. Kelly recommended that we partner with Hanover. The original Hanover queue that we had included a couple of things that I think were specifically on point to this. One was an annual report on D97's commitment to Equity, which was not the Equity Scorecard, but which was a report that I think would be partly data compiled by Hanover and partly the district sort of fleshing that out. It also talked about a comparative analysis, how do other districts committed to Equity do this, et cetera. I was a, I was surprised in the memo that's with this Board packet to see that we had, that the administration had viewed this plan as, quote, "completely flexible" and that those things had been deprioritized. Because I don't, I don't, I remember the social, emotional learning survey. I don't remember any conversation saying we were not going to do those things or that the plan was completely flexible. So I'm not opposed to this, to the items that are in the queue for this year. I think starting co-teaching, I, it makes a lot of sense. It seems like a really important key priority for us. I'm not opposed to culture and climate surveys. But it doesn't address the fundamental goals of my understanding why we partnered Hanover in the first place, which was to put our equity policy into place, including through this reporting and accountability framework where we communicate, where we do this analysis, we communicate it in a central place. We share it with the community, we collectively, as a Board and an administration, hold ourselves accountable to the goals of the equity policy. So I would love to see some presentation on how we would intend to meet the, meet what the equity policy calls for in the coming school year, whether it's through the use, using Hanover or it's through some other mechanism. I'm, I'm agnostic about whether it's Hanover, but I was surprised because I think Hanover was originally brought in for that purpose. So that's what, that would be my request as a Board member, is that we go back to the equity policy, we go back to the specific reporting and assessment, et cetera, that's called for in the equity policy, and that we get some sense of how we plan to do it for the school year. I agree with what's been said about, you know, we're in a time of heightened equity concerns, and I, I don't think we've done this yet in the two and a half years since the policy has been passed. So that would be my request.
And I can certainly go back to Hanover and also in conversation with our administrative team to reexamine the queue in light of the equity policy components, particularly the reporting component that you named.
And we can bring, bring it back in, in the early October. We still have time, a month and a half before we have to commit for our, our new contract.
Related to that, I do have a question with the Culture Climate Survey. You have the Survey Administration and Executive Reports in there, but there's no place to do any further dive on anything that's found in the survey? And if we're going to actually make use of it, rather than just say, kind of a top level, where are we? I'm, I'm a little surprised to see that it's literally just two administrations of a Culture Climate Survey and no follow-up dive to look at any interesting trends that come from that, so that we might be able to make changes, to make improvements.
Great question. Let me address that. So what you see here, this is just Hanover's, like, their research queue that sort of communicates to the administrative team and to the Board just what, kind of what their, their work is. What is not shown in this visual is the work that we then do internally with not only as, as an administrative team, but also in working with our school-level teams to examine this data, and also the work that we do, working, meeting with different student groups to also analyze the data.
I would, I would love to see that all wrapped into one at some point because that is such a critical component of this. If that's not happening, then this is not useful. But with that happening, all of a sudden, this becomes useful. So I think it's important to make sure that those are looked at at the same time.
I can include that in an updated timeline and sequence, so you can see where that's all happening.
Great, thank you. And if you could also, with the co-teaching, do a similar piece with that to look to see, I'm sure you're, you have some classroom observations going on as part of the district work, as I see Ebony nodding. So again, including that in gives a richer picture of what's being looked at and how it's going to be actually acted on.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
So I have a, my question is, is actually on the simplistic side. So when I looked at the, the, the contract dates for Hanover, I think it ends October 31st, 2022, but the trimester ends November 19th, 2000, uh, that's this year's trimester. Is that the end of the trimester? It's a, we should end the contract with Hanover so that we have a full trimester's worth of data? If that's how it's going to work, and I'm not sure that that's what's happening.
I have not looked to see how that, that date lines up with, like, the trimesters, but I can look into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carrie, I think it lines up a little better in terms of data, kind of, assessment administration. So we obviously give kind of assessments early in the trimester, so that will capture our first trimesters, kind of return to school, MAP, BASS, AIMS Web, that kind of thing, if we decide to do the updates.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I do actually have another question that's related to something we were presented on about curriculum earlier in a different meeting. Are we doing data analysis in-house or using Hanover to evaluate curriculum that we're using? Because I saw in the middle schools are piloting, or piloting Lucy Calkins' work with the Readers-Writers Units of Study, which I was a little surprised by, as I haven't heard a lot of great feedback from some colleagues about that for the middle school. And so I'm wondering, have we tracked the data in terms of how it's been working for literacy disparities in the K-5? And, and using that to leverage into doing this with middle school? Or I guess I'm curious, and we've discussed this in, in previous Board meetings before, in terms of, are we evaluating the curriculum that we're adopting and really thinking about how it's working or not working for us before we're moving it further in? I guess I'm curious if we're using Hanover or if we're doing things in-house to kind of look at what we're, how things are working or not working for us.
That was a discussion with Hanover last year. I think the difficulty comes with when we implement versus some of the changes in the assessment. So for example, if you were looking at what is now IAR, that has iterated several times since we actually started using the units of study. But we have tried to kind of figure out what those time periods are. It becomes tough to kind of tease out because of those overlaps, what's what. But that was something that Hanover, that we actually charged them with looking at last year.
I think that's an ongoing concern we have in, in terms of curriculum that's brought into the district and evaluating whether it's effective or not. And I'm, I know I'm getting a little too much into the weeds of literacy stuff, because that's my area, but I know there's a lot of controversy in terms of the Calkins curriculum and the science of reading. And I don't necessarily side with the science of reading folks either, but I, I was just wondering about how we're evaluating its effectiveness, if we're thinking about bringing it to the middle schools. And if we're not used, if, if, if the measurements we have for Hanover aren't necessarily working, how are we deciding as a district whether a curriculum is effective or not?
So that's, I think, what the pilot opportunities actually provide us. So we're piloting three different, there are a number of them. So I believe it's three different Ling and Lit resources. So thankfully, we have MAP back in play, we have Master Connect in those areas, so we can look at all three, not just from a data perspective, but in terms of how students receive them, how teachers, like, ease of use. So in the pilot phase, we're able to do quite a bit of kind of comparative analysis between those three before we make a final recommendation. But kind of retroactively with the elementary, it was just a bit tougher.
Are there any other questions from Board members?
I'll bring that, this back to you, we'll be bringing it back to you in either later in September or early October. I'm trying to respond to all the questions the Board raised tonight.
All right, thank you so much for all the hard work you guys are doing. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, then, we are at Board assignments. So we have standing Board Committee Liaison Report. So folks who are on Fact-Fork, CCE, or CLAM.
We had a FAG meeting, and it was focused, but we, we didn't talk about it last time because we did have a Board meeting after it. And so I'm sorry that I didn't bring it up then, but it was mostly a conversation about ventilation. And you guys all saw, I believe, the, or maybe, oh, you know what? We just talked about it, and the, we have an HVAC person that's on FAG. We have structural engineers, it's like that. They don't, you know, they thought we were do, what we were doing was sufficient and didn't think we needed to get the, you know, we talked about whether or not getting air purifiers was necessary. But at the same time, they aren't, you know, that's not their expertise. So we had a nice discussion with them and talked about what some of the people had sent in and got some feedback. And nothing conclusive came out of it, but we definitely tried to tap into that expertise during that meeting.
Well, I think what they did come back with was they reviewed the process for how that was done, which was within kind of expertise to review what the, the district was doing from a due diligence perspective. And they all came back and said, yes, the district is doing due diligence on checking where those should be. Let's add that. Um, I can also throw in CLAM. We-
Can I just, oh, can I just ask really quickly on the due diligence part? Are, are we expecting to hear back from the administration about sort of the purifier question? And where that might, I know we talked about it last Board meeting or a couple Board meetings ago. And I think there was some discussion of, I'm trying to remember where it landed, but I feel like there was, yeah.
I think the position of the committee was that there was not sufficient evidence to recommend a purifier in every single room. And they felt that the mitigations and the efforts that we have taken up to this point were sufficient. And, and air purifiers in every room was not necessary, especially at a cost of a half a million to $700,000.
And I, I thought there was also some discussion about whether, I think in talking to Jeannie, she had said that there were some parts of some buildings where ventilation is not as good, where there may be worse than consideration of purifiers. And I guess I wonder where that sort of assessment is at.
Gavin, this is Jeannie. Any of those locations, we are putting small air purifiers in. They've already started to go out to the buildings.
Yeah, we can.
We can hear.
Now again, sorry.
Okay. All of those areas, maybe that had poorer ventilation or were rooms that were converted from storage rooms, any windowless rooms are now being sent air purifiers. So we've got most of the middle school, I'm sorry, most of the elementary schools done. We've placed two orders so far. We have to make another order right now for the remainder of the middle schools, but those are all be addressed as soon as the third order comes in.
Okay, thanks, Jeannie.
You're welcome. And then we're starting next week indoor air quality testing, again, that we completed in December and January of last year. And we're going to do it again, this time lowering our particular matter to 2.5 microns and below, and then the same other concerns, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, temperature, and then relative humidity. So we'll have those results in about three weeks.
Great. And, and will you share, share those? I mean, probably not the super technical aspects of it, but maybe the high-level takeaways.
Yes, no, I'll definitely share that.
Great, thank you.
All right, so if there are no more questions on that one, I can throw in CLAM. So we are about to start in a new legislative cycle, if you will. And coming off of the success of the Data Sharing Bill, CLAM has asked that the Board come up with our next round of priorities. What I have proposed is that instead of saying this is one solid priority, that we come up with our lists of priorities based on our strategic plans moving forward, so that as they're speaking with legislators, if something fits with what is moving forward elsewhere, they have the flexibility to say, oh, this is a priority of the Board, rather than having one single thing that they're going after. We can, we can pick one thing, but that we also give the flexibility of responding to where legislation is moving. So to that end, I've been coming up with a spreadsheet of what we have in our current strategic documents. But I would like to throw open to the Board both today, but also kind of as a follow-up over the next two weeks. If there are things that people would like to see as priority lists to discuss amongst the Board, that if you could send those to me, that would be awesome. And if you have any right now, I would be happy to throw those down, but I also realize it's, without notice, that might not be what people have on hand.
So I have had a meeting this Saturday. As many of you may know, the Village Oak Park is hosting a virtual symposium on sustainability this coming Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00. Participants can register on D97's website. I believe it's also on the Park District and the Village's website as well, and D200. The focus is to basically get as many people registered and involved as possible. And they would love to see more of our elected officials at that symposium, if you can, or just encourage folks to come. So thank you to whoever got that on our website, so that people can register through there.
There any other intergovernmental reports? TTOC, CEC?
TTOC is next, next Monday, so we'll report back.
The OPRF Community Council meets on Thursday, so we'll have a report after Thursday.
No other reports? Okay. Then that brings us to board remarks. If they have, if anyone has any comments they'd like to share.
I have a comment. So first of all, I appreciate all the work that the principals and teachers and parents, but most of our students have been doing, I think, to really be enthusiastic at school. I mean, I think they wear a mask better than the adults. And I know that the, the classrooms have been safe. I haven't heard, you know, my, my kids aren't complaining. They're going to school and have really great attitudes. And I think our teachers are really engaging with them and so that's been very positive. We've received quite a few comments regarding our responses. And Dr. Chappell's participation here was really, I very much appreciated. I will say that I, I want, I hope we keep these conversations going. I think that we haven't had any in-school transmission, school spread that we are seeing reports of are not in communities with, where masking is mandatory in most cases. It's, they're not, they're not necessarily taking all these other steps. And I do think this is an exercise in risk management as opposed to risk elimination. And I hope we do continue to keep exploring, getting our kids back into school as quickly as possible, not only for the benefit of in-school learning, but because the risk is very low of transmission. We're not talking about kids who test positive. We're talking about kids who are deemed close contact to kids that test positive. And in most cases, they're still masked or there's other mitigation strategies. And I'm not suggesting we become lax. I just think we have to keep on focused on, on what the science says and Dr. Chappell's advice and do what we can to get kids back as soon as they can do so safely. Including as Dr. Chappell said, when our community spread does decrease, hearing that she would be supportive of the day one, three, seven, nine at the time that if it decreases down to the low spread of nine per, right? When we get, I think that we should be prepared to, to move quickly when we can to meet the needs of the community as this changes on a regular basis. And and then there was only, and then, and with regards to all the people that have to do things above and beyond what they already do to support our students. If we think that we're going to need more staff to support them in order to make sure of whether it's the nurses or the principals, and we know there are staff shortages, I think that we should be planning ahead and knowing if we're going to need more staff in order to provide these safe re-entering of students back into school. And then my other comment is that if we, can we get ahead of the concept of looking into mandating student vaccine? When it becomes eligible for all students? I'm curious to know. A lot of vaccines are mandated and I'm curious to know from our legal counsel so that we can have those discussions when it's, the time is right.
I just want to provide a note of congratulations to all D ninety seven administrators and staff and students. When Dr. Powell mentioned that we had five positive cases out of three thousand or so tested, that means that we're doing enough of the right things. We have great mitigation strategies. You're going to find cases if you test. I sound like a politician and I don't mean to, but it's true. It's an odds number. But such a low number of tests compared to the number of people tested means that we are doing enough of the right things. And it took a lot of work and effort to get those right things in place. And so I just want to say congratulations and thank you to everyone for their hard work to, who made all of this happen. Because our schools are safe for our students and our staff to learn and to teach. So thank you.
Other comments? I will say that I know we got a number of emails about the high vaccination rates in our community and that implying that there's a level of comfort we should have. But again, I think reiterating what Dr. Chappell said in terms of, we do have high levels of transmission. And I've watched the weekly reports and, you know, we have increasing number of kids who are getting infected. And so, you know, we do need to, you know, the, the problem with when we feel safe, it's, we feel safe because of the measures we're taking. And so then we want to be more relaxed because we think we're doing enough. And so I, I, I do think we have to kind of take all those things into consideration. And I appreciate Dr. Chappell's comment about when we reduce our transmission rates, then we can have some of these conversations. Cause I think there's a lot of, you know, this and or, and so, you know, I, I, I do think about all of those things. And I know we're asking a lot of folks to do a lot of things. And I know that's a strain. And I do want to also reiterate the shortages that are happening around the country. And in our communities, my fifth grader still does not have a permanent teacher. So I am very aware of the issues that are impacting our district. And so just for the folks in the community, like as board members, we are also dealing with the realities of these issues as well. And we're trying to do the best we can, I think, in terms of what is good for all the kids in the community. So just reiterating some of that. Okay.
Thank you transparency. We'd like to mention the process for replacement of the board member.
Oh, yes.
I think the public's probably interested.
Yes, that's actually, that's a good point. So we have received six applicants for the position. Right now, we are going to try to coordinate interviewing the applicants sometime in the next two weeks, ideally, hopefully next week. It's going to depend on scheduling. We're still trying to figure out logistics in terms of what exactly those interviews will look like. And at some point in the next month, sorry, we're still figuring out dates. But some, ideally it would be before the next board meeting, but depending on schedules, that may not happen. We, based on both the application packets and the interviews, will hopefully narrow down a candidate. And in the ideal setting, we would seat them at the next meeting. But in all honesty, I don't, I don't, I just don't know if that's going to happen in two weeks' time. We have a lot of things going on in the district. I think that's it unless there were.
My only question on that is we should be careful of the clock on that one because there is a limited time limit set by the state, I think, on that.
We have until the end of October.
Okay. Like I can't remember the end of September or end of October.
Halloween.
Yeah, yeah, we have a fair amount of time. I think the, we were pushing the, the clock in terms of moving quickly on this just because there's a lot of heavy lifting that's happening with all of our board members in terms of the number of things we're having to do. And the superintendent search and all of that too. And so we're, we're well ahead of where we need to be. And if we do make it within the next two weeks, that'd be pretty amazing. So whoever would be selected needs to be ready to start working. So that's, but yeah, we have, we have a full, almost six weeks, I think, before we need to, to do anything. So. Okay. Anything else that I missed from board remarks or things we need to address? We don't have a search update. We, the, the survey was sent out by the search firm and the window, I think on that has closed. The board has provided a list of different folks to contact for focus groups and potential individual interviews. And I think from, based on an email, we saw, it looks like they've already started reaching out to make some contacts with those folks.
So the survey date was extended to September twenty-third.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I apologize. So it sounds like maybe our return rate wasn't good enough. So if folks are listening and they haven't done the survey, we, we encourage folks to do it. I know there was some chatter about people not looking at survey data, but this is being done by the search firm and it will be looked at. So just reemphasizing that.
Maybe we
A return rate is good. All right. So that's good. So now we're just trying to get even more data, I think. Okay. Thanks, Amanda, for that. Then I think that brings us to the draft agenda. So this would be our second September meeting. It looks like we'll have some updates from the policy committee. Is that you Gavin or is this a different policy?
I think it's me. I'm a committee of one.
I know you're a committee of one right now.
Which is okay. I am not complaining. Other people are, got a lot going on.
Dictatorship.
I, I'll just need to coordinate with the administration about moving this forward. But I'm good with it, saying it here, so. You're muted Venus.
I can't see the screen. Yeah, I'm still struggling to see this.
I have it open on my own window, so I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Um, okay. So then depending on if we can schedule interviews for the replacement next week or not, we, that might make it onto the agenda for the following meeting. But we'll see if type that meeting. But otherwise I, I don't think there's anything else that's missing or needs to be added. They don't see anything?
Well, the possibility of follow-up on the Hanover partnership.
Yeah, the Hanover. Okay, I think that's it. Then I think I need a motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, quick roll call. Ross driven?
Yes.
Heard Johnson?
Yes.
Spurlock? Kim?
Yes.
Moore?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at eight forty-nine PM.
Thanks, everybody.